Good evening. My name is Derek Beckwith, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening, and I'd like to welcome you to the July 2, 2025 meeting of the Planning Board. And I'm going to start just by saying a few announcements. First of all, this meeting is being livestreamed by BevCam. Thank you, BevCam, once again for the wonderful work that you do in keeping our citizens informed. And also pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, Section 40, adopted on March 29, 2023, this meeting of the City of Beverly Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend via remote participation may do so through the Google Meet information provided at the end of the agenda. The agenda is posted on the city website, so you can find the login details there. And that's been posted around, and it's on the formal agenda for this evening. So with that, I call the meeting to order. And first of all, do we have any subdivision approval not required? None. Okay. Before we recess for public hearings, one of the hearings this evening, we have a request for a continuance from July 2 to our next meeting, which is on July 15. And that's for Zero Trask Lane. Miranda, do you have anything you wanted to say?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We just are, as you, as the board knows, we're mindful of our, as the board knows, we're mindful of our quorum on this, on this matter. And in light of the Chair's absence, and she had already missed one meeting, we are, would like to continue it to the next meeting until we understand more what the likelihood and timing of her return is going to be.
Okay. Thank you. With that being said, does, is there any discussion, or do I hear a motion to continue the meeting to our next meeting on July 15?
Move.
Moved by Ellen Flannery. Is there a second? Second by Wayne Miller. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, eight to nothing. That meeting is, that hearing is continued until next meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on from that, we have the next item on the agenda, which, this could be a record-fast meeting, I doubt it, but we're already at number four on the agenda, for those watching at home, is the repetitive petition, 114 Livingston Avenue, the applicant, Seven Porter Terrace LLC, Brian Marks. And since it's our first for that, yeah, if you could read the announcement, that would be great. So I'll vamp. In the meantime, I want to thank everyone for being here. Oh, don't worry. I will not be doing any rap of planning board business this evening. It's just going to make it all the more dramatic you can when you find it and read it, so.
(inaudible) 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 Apologies for that. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 16, that the City of Beverly Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 2, 2025, during a public meeting that begins at 7:00 PM at Beverly City Hall, Third Floor Council Chambers, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, Mass., relative to a repetitive petition for a building permit application that was denied within the past two years to construct a single-family home at 114 Livingston Avenue, Beverly, Massachusetts, 01915. City of Planning Board will be determining if it gives its consent for the repetitive petition, that the applicant has provided enough information for the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a finding that there is a specific and material change to the building permit application. The owner and applicant is Brian Marks, manager of Seven Porter Terrace LLC, 100 Cummings Center, Suite 248C, Beverly, Massachusetts, 01915. The property is located at 114 Livingston Avenue in an R-10 zoning district and is shown on Assessors Map 22, Lot 56. The application materials are on file in the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review.
Terrific. Before we do that, I realized I skipped over an item in the agenda in my haste to set a record for this evening, so.
Oh, you have to open the public hearing.
Expediency. Do I hear a motion to enter public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Flannery. All those in favor? Opposed? We are now in public hearings. We've heard Mr. Claussen read the announcement for the repetitive petition for 114 Livingston Terrace, so now we will.
Livingston Ave.
Livingston Ave.
Pardon me? Avenue. Sorry. And so now we will discuss, is there a representative of the applicant?
Good evening.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Beckwith, members of the board. I'm Marshall Handley. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Seven Porter Terrace LLC. Two years ago, or September 5, 2023, after an application for a building permit for 114 Livingston Avenue, the, the Building Commissioner denied the application, among other things, on the basis that the lot area was insufficient due to wetlands located on the lot, which reduced it below the, the 10,000 square feet required for an R-10 zone. That was appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and on October 25, they, they heard the appeal and decided that the, based on the records of the Conservation Commission, that the lot was affected by a wetland resource area of, of undetermined size, but that that reduced the lot area below the minimum required, and the building inspector was, acted correctly in denying the application. There was also an issue of frontage, which was not addressed by the board. They declared that moot based on their finding that there was insufficient frontage, insufficient lot area in the lot, and that that was sufficient basis to uphold building inspector. Thereafter, the matter was, was taken up with the Beverly Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission found that there, there was a wetland resource area there. That was appealed to the DEP, and the DEP issued a superseding order identifying the so-called wetland resource as a drainage structure of the City of Beverly, a street drainage. And, and thereafter, the Conservation Commission found, based on the superseding order issued by the DEP, that there were no jurisdictional wetlands affecting the property, and the lot area is now restored and is in excess of the 10,000 square feet required. The statute requires us to show, and I believe that, that we have, that there are material changes to the, to the application. And for that, we ask that you so find, and allow us to go back to the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. In the meantime, we are going to be coming back to this board to seek a minor modification of the existing 114 Livingston Avenue subdivision, and seek your input and advice as to how much of Livingston Avenue needs to be paved to, to construct this, this single-family house. The, the neighbors, obviously, would, are in favor of minimal pavement. The fire department has, has offered its, its opinion that minimal pavement is sufficient if the, if, as long as it's sprinkled.
But that's not necessarily relevant for tonight's discussion.
It's not relevant for tonight, but, but it's.
So perhaps you don't need to that going to.
But we are going to be bringing it back, and I hope with, perhaps as soon as the next meeting, but if not, certainly at the, at the following. But I do believe that with the superseding order, we have satisfied the statutory criterion. It doesn't require us to prove that we would actually succeed in, in getting a, a building permit, but it does, I believe, satisfy the requirement that we have, that there is a substantial and material change in circumstances, and so I ask you to find that.
So by, our role here is not to find that there is a specific or substantial.
Your role is to.
It's just to, to consent whether or not there is substantial information that, that would help the governing authority, in this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals, to actually make a decision.
Correct.
And so, so we're not, you know, to, to make any decision or opinion.
Correct.
On the merits of your argument, just whether or not there is substantial or specific and material change.
Specific and material change refers to what's actually within the application. What we're, all we're determining is if there's enough information filed for the permit granting authority, in this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals, to render that decision.
To render that decision. So, and what you've outlined for us, and in addition to the, the documents that we've received in advance of this meeting, is that the DEP, for example, has issued a superseding finding, and that, that finding is that the, there are not wetlands there, there's a man-made structure.
Correct.
There, and that this information is dramatic enough, or, or information enough to be new information for the Zoning Board of Appeals to be able to hear.
It is, that's correct, and that it is, it overturns the factual basis upon which the Zoning Board of Appeals made its, its original decision.
Yeah. So that being said, are you?
I'm done. Thank you.
You're done? Okay, thank you very much. I, I'd open up for discussion with the board with the note that for this vote, eight members need to vote in the affirmative, which means it needs to be an eight to zero vote tonight in order to give consent. So, yes, Wayne?
I recall, I think what I'm recalling is that there was a damaged drainage pipe. Is that not the case?
No, there's a, there's an open ditch that had been classified by the Conservation Commission as an intermittent stream.
Okay.
And that, upon review by the DEP, was determined to be a municipal drainage structure that connected the street drains above the, above gradient to below gradient outfall, and that, that it was not a wetland resource. That determination by the DEP was adopted and confirmed by the Beverly Conservation Commission in a finding that it was, it was not a wetland resource, a jurisdictional wetland resource.
And given that condition, this is sufficient area to now qualify?
Correct. There is no, there is no reduction in allowable, in measurable lot area required by virtue of the existence of a wetland resource.
Okay, and you have 10,000 plus.
And we have 10,000.
Again, I'm, I'm going to remind the board that we're not to debate, we're not debating the merits of this. It's, did they file enough information for the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a decision?
Thank you, Mr. Claussen.
Yeah, well, we'll excuse that as mere curiosity.
Mr. Gomes?
The, so the ZBA denial was solely on the wetlands issue. We're not here to litigate the frontage issue. The ZBA is here to litigate the frontage issue. So given that, it seems like, you know, that's the material change that they're looking for here. So I, I think we can probably, from my perspective, that's it.
Mr. Claussen?
Yep.
In the vote, do we move to vote consent?
You need that.
I mean, something, something along that lines. I mean, the, the statute is very vague as to, as to what the procedurally is supposed to be, other than it takes an eight out of nine vote.
Very seldom used.
It's very seldom used. I have no record of one in any of our files, and I had to search high and low through, like, DHC, well, just now EHLC guidance and Massachusetts APA guidance to find how to run this.
Any other comments? I would say, to me, it seems like there's, there's information, new information, very different from what the, the governing authority, the ZBA, was discussing and had before them at that time, and in my opinion, that would be more than enough for them to, for the applicant to, to go back to the ZBA. Yeah?
It's also a public hearing, if you want to open it.
Yeah. Are there any members of the public here who would wish to discuss it either here or in the room or online? Okay, no members of the public have indicated either in the room or through our computer access here, Google Meet. So I'd ask the board one more time. Is any other questions? People are ready to vote? And that vote, for example, would be that the Planning Board consents, some motion along that. Do I have a motion? And welcome a motion.
To close the public hearing?
Oh, okay. Yeah, hold on a second. Let's close the public hearing first.
Move.
Second by Gomes. All those in favor? Okay, the public hearing is closed, the vote is unanimous, and that being said, welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, the Planning Board consent to the repetitive petition for 114 Livingston Ave, applicant Brian Marks. Sorry. Thank you.
Move that the Planning Board consent to the repetitive petition for 114 Livingston Ave, applicant Brian Marks, Seven Porter Terrace LLC.
Is there seconds? Seconded by Ms. Flannery. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The vote is eight to nothing? Thank you very much. You have your consent. Our consent. Terrific. It's the first time for everything, the first repetitive position, petition I can remember on the board, so.
Welcome.
Terrific.
First ever.
First ever. Okay. Next on our agenda, item number five, is open space, do we need to, we don't have to open, we're still, we just closed that one hearing, but we're still having that. Yeah. Is the public hearing for open space residential design, site plan review, application number 12-24, 184 and 186 Hart Street, CS Hart LLC. This, again, is the first, so, thank you, Mr. Claussen.
I have this one. Notice is hereby given under the provisions of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81T, and Section 300-54 of the Beverly Zoning Ordinance, that the Beverly Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 2, 2025, during a public meeting that begins at 7:00 PM at City Hall, Third Floor Council Chambers, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, Mass., relative to open space residential design, OSRD, site plan number 1224, for approval of a division of land along Hart Street, including the renovation of the existing 186 Hart Street residence, removal of the 184 Hart Street residence, the construction of six new single-family residences, and a common driveway. The owner applicant is CS Hart LLC, Ryan Carvalho, 1 Melvin Street, Wakefield, Mass. 01880. The land is located at 184 and 186 Hart Street in an R-15 and R-45 zoning district and is shown on Assessors Maps 74, Lot 1. The applications and plans are on file in the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review.
Good evening, and there's a file on there that'll say 18 slides or something like that. That's the one we'd like, thank you.
If you could introduce yourself, Mr. Griffin, for the folks.
Robert Griffin, Griffin Engineering, and Ryan Carvalho, the principal, is here this evening of CS Hart LLC. And you may recall, we were last here in March to select a preferred plan for this OSRD application. We had originally filed back in October, we'd had a site walk, and then one of the, at our December meeting, there were some questions raised about site distance, and so we had a traffic evaluation done, looking at the site distances at various locations along the frontage, and that led to our selection in February of the proposed plan. The project, as you may recall, is about, we have 11 acres of land, and we had done a yield plan, let's see, showing, saving basically 186 Hart Street, and then tearing down 184 Hart Street.
Yeah, I want to fix that.
And replacing that with a new building.
Let me fix, let me open that a different way, so that all that stuff doesn't pop up.
I don't know. That's the one, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was perfect. There we go.
Better you than me with all that.
There we go.
There we go.
Let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, this was our, our site context plan, and so, so again, about.
There we go.
Here we go. 11 acres of land, we have a little bit of wetlands in the middle, we have a pond, and then next to the pond was a smaller pond, the lower pond, as it's called, and that one was considered, from the Conservation Commission's point of view, a potential vernal pool, and so that affected our site layout, you may recall. We have some land nearby, the Mass Audubon Society, several acres of land there, and some land with conservation restrictions of being held by Essex County Green Belt to the south and west of our property. We have residential properties across Hart Street, and here's our Dyer Road, Adeline Road neighborhood, this, you know, the lots are much smaller in that area than along Hart Street, because that's in the R-15 portion, zone portion. So let's go to the next one, please. I just, I thought, before we got too far, I just wanted to remind us, there's that pond that gets, you know, reasonably close to Hart Street, and here's the second pond, a little hard to see with a tree cover there, but that's the second pond right there, and that's the one that was considered a potential vernal pool. The northern portion of the site, very flat, obviously some sort of agricultural past in this area. You can see on the site plan, there's a fenced-in area here, there's a couple of sheds and a small pool, and the pool and the small sheds get removed as part of the renovations of the site. Next slide, please. So this, the, the site hasn't really changed very much since our preferred plan was selected. I will point out a couple of minor changes. First, Lot 7 has gotten a little bit smaller. So here's our Lot 7, and it used to extend all the way to the west here, and what we have done is we've created this non-buildable parcel called Parcel B, and our intention is to convey that to the adjacent number 200 Hart Street property. So that would basically be merged in with that property and really have no effect on our, our project.
Who owns that property?
That is.
Mrs.
It's Mrs., it's, it's under a, I forget the name of the LLC that it's owned by.
But you heard in the initial OSRD process from Tucker, Mrs., the neighbor who lives there, and so anyways, so our, our intention is to convey Parcel B to that property. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. We have a common driveway serving lots 4, 6, and 7, and the reason we did the numbering system the way we did it is if we look at the frontage along Hart Street, 1, 2, 3, the frontage for 4 is over here, and then 5. So that's why we end up with that discontinuity, I guess you'd say. We have a common driveway serving 4, 6, and 7, so there'll be a homeowners association that deals with that common driveway and the drainage on that common driveway, and then we'll have a separate homeowners association for 1, 2, 3, and 5, and the only thing that 1, 2, 3, and 5 have to maintain are the dry wells, the drainage features on those lots themselves. So they'll have different monthly fees, I suspect. From the point of view of our OSRD relief, and we did go over this in the initial process, it really, again, hasn't really changed, but we have, we have a couple of buildings in the buffer zone, so this line is 100 feet from the pond, so Lot 2, the building is partially within the buffer zone. Lot 3, the building is, looks like completely within the buffer zone. We have some existing development in the buffer zone on Lot 5, so 186 is there, and there's some yard and driveways and a garage in, in the buffer zone. When we get to lots 4, 6, 7, there's no work in the buffer zone, and in part, that's because we have 100-foot setback from the vernal pool area here, so we don't want to do any work within that 100-foot zone there. There is a little bit of lawn work in, on Lot 4, associated with the buffer zone to this pond, and so that's permissible, but work in, within 100 feet of a vernal pool is not permissible. We have activities in the tract buffer on the north side, so in, this is a 25-foot tract buffer here, we have some removal of a shed in that area, and we've got a little bit of common driveway construction in that area as well, so we've asked for relief for that. On the south side, we have a tract buffer down here along Dyer Road, and we've asked for a little bit of relief so, to allow us to remove some dangerous trees in that area. So the, the tree removals will sort of come up to that 25-foot tract buffer, and they might go into it a little bit, so that's why we've asked for relief in the tract buffer in that particular area. And we also have relief related to the non-OSRD street frontage, so you may recall, we have reduced frontage in area on some of these lots. Certainly, you can see, some of them have very narrow frontage as compared to, you know, the R-45 portion of the site up here, and Hart Street is a non-OSRD street, so we discussed in the initial OSRD phase the requirement for that waiver. I'm going to show you the, we've got nine drawings that we submitted, I'll flip through them, most of them pretty quickly, and we can always come back if we have questions after that. So let's go to the next slide, please. Title sheet, that's enough of that, we'll go to the next one. Our existing conditions plan here, we did add a couple of things to our existing conditions plan as compared to what we had shown you before. We provided a little bit more information on 200, a little bit more information on the houses on the east side of Hart Street here, and some of the utilities that are, you know, the light poles and things like that on that side of the street, so that was expanded a little bit. We also have these little dots here, test pits, we did a number of test pits on the property as part of our drainage analysis, and we submitted a stormwater report as part of our application. Soil results here were excellent, medium to coarse sand, so plenty of capacity to put water into the ground. In fact, we don't have any point sources going into the ponds, so we're able to get rid of essentially all of our water through infiltration means. And then again, we have the 25-foot setback from the pond, the 50-foot, and the 100-foot, just as we've shown those in the past before. Let's go to the next one. This is a plan of land, and there are a couple little additions here. We've added in some easement, so up, there's an easement here, sort of a, this is where the hammerhead turnaround area is on Lots 6 and 7, and this easement goes all the way out to Hart Street. out to Hart Street. And one of the things that we've done, and this is, again, based on our discussions with the owner of 200 Hart Street, is we've reduced the size of the access easement at Hart Street. So currently, if we went back to the existing conditions plan, we see that this area here is included as part of the access easement, but it, part of our arrangements are to reduce the size of it. We really don't need it to go into that property any further than we've shown here. So that's one of the modifications to our plan of land. We also have a drainage easement here. We've got infiltration structure going in here and an overflow device going out towards, to the south here. We have a drainage easement over here between Lots 2 and 3, and there's an existing drain pipe in that particular area. And then we've got a couple of sidewalk easements, and I'll talk about these as we get a little further along in the presentation, but we have a 10-foot sidewalk easement in, right here in front of Lots 7 and 6, and a portion of Lot 5, 186 Hart Street, has a sidewalk easement on a portion of that as well. We continue to have our Parcel A, that's this whole area here, about 5.04 acres, and that is to be set aside for open space. Let's go to the next one, please.
Isn't there a landscape easement between 3 and 5 for Lot 4, or something along those lines?
Let's see, the landscape easement. So we do have a landscape easement. If you look at Lot 5 here, his, and we'll, we'll see this a little bit more as we go along, but his common, or his circular driveway comes in this area here, and so we've left him the opportunity to landscape along his driveway where these narrow portions of Lot 6 and 7 are. So he'll maintain that, and it doesn't really have any effect on Lot 6 or 7.
And between 3 and 5 as well for the flagstone portion of Lot 4?
Let me see, the flagstone portion of Lot 4.
For the, where the frontage goes for Lot 4.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay. You're right, Lot 4 isn't going to do any maintenance of the tree belt or anything along the street here, and so Lot 3 will have the opportunity to do that. Otherwise, you know, Lot 4 would have to get his lawnmower out, go all the way around the property to Hart Street, come down just to cut the grass there, and that would probably never happen, so. All right, let's go to the next one. So here's our site plan, and... I had drawn some highlighting on this thing, and it didn't make it through on the PDF, so I'll just try to describe it as well as I can. From a drainage point of view, we have a couple of catch basins along the common driveway, so we've got a, come on. There we go. There's a catch basin there, and there's a catch basin back here by this house, and then they both drain to a water quality treatment device, and then goes into an infiltration bed at that location there. The infiltration bed allows water, you know, if a really large storm comes, 100-year storm or something like that, there will be some water that comes out of the infiltration bed, and discharges right here about 100 feet from the vernal pool. That's just activated in an overflow event only. Most of the time, the water will just go down into the ground through those good soils that I mentioned before. We've got a little bit of work, again, associated with the driveway construction in that tract buffer. You can sort of see some disturbance close to that area there. We've got, here's that shed that gets removed, it's inside the tract buffer. Now, along Lots 1, 2, and 3, so down in this area here, we want to lift these houses up a little bit as compared to the existing terrain, so we're going to fill in the front yards, bring it up three to four feet, and that way, we'll have a slight grade from the driveway out towards the street. And this also provides us the opportunity to build a nice, large, and flat turning area, so in front of each garage, we have enough room to turn a vehicle around so that you'll end up going nose-first out onto Hart Street. It also helps make us, it helps us ensure that the basement is not in the water table so that we have a dry basement condition for those homeowners, and they'll all have, you know, decks or patios in the backs of their house, and they'll be able to, the finished floor will be about four to five feet above the grade of the backyard, so there'll be, you know, a pretty, pretty normal setup from a backyard point of view. We've added a 18-inch berm on Lot 1 here, this little area here, and this is just to slow down stormwater from this area as it runs towards Parcel, runs towards Parcel A and the pond, and this was necessary for us to make our stormwater calculations work, and you may recall, we don't want to have any increase in runoff associated with the project, either in rate or volume, and so this will hold water for a few hours in a large storm event. We've also been careful to size the height of this berm so that water can't back up onto the properties on Dyer Road, so that's why it's only 18 inches tall. If we made it bigger, then at that point, we'd start worrying about backing up water onto other people's property. But again, so it, most storms, you won't even see any water accumulated here, only in large storms will accumulate, and it allows those stormwater calculations to work, as I mentioned. Lot 3 is where 184 is, we're going to tear down that house and put Lot, the new building for Lot 3 in about the same location. We're also showing on the, along Hart Street here, a new sidewalk, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as we come along, a new sidewalk and a crosswalk, that's that feature right there. Okay, let's go to the next one, please, we should look at the utilities. Nothing too unusual in the utilities, my highlighting, again, is lost, but we're adding a new hydrant at the location of the common driveway here, and we've been to the fire department and talked to them about this, they find this satisfactory. We actually have a hydrant not that far from that site, so there's an existing hydrant at the bend in the road up there, there's an existing hydrant down here by Lot 1, and so we'll have, you know, this hydrant will be the second hydrant, really, in front of our frontage directly. We, these lots back here, Lot 7 and 6 will, actually, Lot 7, 6, and 5 will have pumps to pump sewage out to the street. It's just a little too flat in that area to serve those houses by gravity. 186 already has an existing gravity sewer. We'll inspect that sewer line as part of construction to make sure it's in good condition and replace it if necessary. Lots 1, 2, and 3 will have gravity connections going out to the sewer in Hart Street, there's an 8-inch existing municipal sewer out there, and when they actually installed that sewer line, they left stubs periodically in the vicinities of Lot 1, 2, and 3, so we may not even have to dig up the street, assuming that the stub is in the convenient location where we think it is and in good condition. There's a 12-inch water main in Hart Street. All of these houses will have, you know, typical 1-inch water services, will have a 2-inch common water line coming back to serve Lots 7, 6, and 4, and 186, again, has an existing water service, will check it and make sure it's in good shape and plan on continuing to reuse that. Electric telephone cable, our overhead in Hart Street, we are proposing a transformer located right about here, so we'll come overhead down, drop down to a pole, and then come to a transformer, then go underground to Lots 4, 6, and 7, but the rest of the houses will be served by overhead power as their neighbors are. Go to the next one, please. This is just a profile of the common driveway, and I would just point out, because the terrain is so flat in that area, the common driveway is also pretty flat, so it has a 1% to 2% slope along the length of the driveway there. Typical cross section shows 20-foot wide common driveway with 3-foot shoulders on each side for a total sort of flat area that you could drive on of about 26 feet. And the next three slides are details, I don't think there's a whole lot to show there, but let's just flip through those kind of quickly. There's the pump chamber at the top of the page, some piping connections, next one. This is the subsurface infiltration bed for stormwater and our water quality treatment device, and some standard details for the catch basins and drain manholes and things like that. Next one. This one provides our test pit data, dry well detail, and just an index plan, and so that's about it. And now we'll get to the sidewalks. Okay, so this came up a little bit during our initial OSRD evaluation, and I would mention that we went to the Parking and Traffic Commission recently, and I think there's a letter in your paperwork that they issued a couple of days ago indicating that they're basically in favor of the project and the sidewalks generally as designed. It was a conditional approval, I'll talk about those conditions in a moment, but basically, what we're going to do, or what we're proposing to do, is to have a sidewalk run on our side of Hart Street from Lot 1 up here to Lot 5. And in this area, there'll be a 3-foot grass tree belt, there'll be a granite curb, and then there'll be a 4-foot sidewalk beside that. And these, the sidewalk will lead to this crosswalk right here to cross Hart Street. At the northern end, we've got our common driveway, and so we're going to have a sidewalk that comes down behind, there's some existing stone wall here, you may recall, and this is the need for the, for the sidewalk easement. The stone wall is essentially on the property line, so we're going to put the sidewalk behind the stone wall for safety reasons, and so that's, that's the purpose of the 10-foot easement, and I'll show you a picture of this little area in a moment here, but this will, this will allow, you know, the common driveway residents to get onto that same sidewalk system and come down to this crosswalk and cross to the opposite side of Hart Street. Now, we intentionally left off a connection between Dyer Road and Lot 1, and so we, we don't have a sidewalk here, and we think it's safer without it. We think that if you had people coming up on the west side of Hart Street, so continuing from Dyer Road neighborhood, for example, and coming up on the west side, you'd come up, you'd stay on the west side, you'd get up to here, and all of a sudden, you'd be at this very sharp bend that has no room for a sidewalk, and it's really sort of a dangerous condition. So we want to get people on the east side of Hart Street, and we thought that it would be more effective to not continue the sidewalk in this area for that purpose, and so that's why we have our, our crosswalk up here to, the city's got a nice concrete sidewalk on the opposite side, it was built a few years ago, it's in good condition. And the city really did the same strategy with Dyer Road. Dyer, you know, there's no, we might be able to see it in an aerial, but if you go south on Dyer Road, there's no sidewalk on the west side of Hart Street. These crosswalks get you over onto the east side where the build-out conditions and the visibility is a little bit better. Now, let's go to the next slide, please. So this is the northernmost driveway going into 186. You might recall that it has a circular driveway, so this is the one closest to that sharp bend. There's a sharp bend, you can just see in the photograph there, and here's a stone wall, and there's a yellow cone, here's another, I'm sorry, an orange cone, another orange cone here, indicating the path of the sidewalk. So it'll be behind that stone wall, it then sort of comes across this little straight area here, past this pylon, here's our stone wall continuing on the right side here, and that sidewalk continues from the cone behind the stone wall as it heads towards that crosswalk. This is another couple hundred feet further back on Hart Street, there's that sharp turn again, here's another cone indicating the path of the sidewalk, there's another cone there, it's a little hard to see. And this is where the, this is where the second driveway to 186 comes out, and this is where we transition from sort of behind the stone wall to, you know, a more traditional layout, and there is no sort of stone wall, you know, in, in close proximity to the street here that we'd have to avoid anyway. So this is, from this point south, we will have, again, a granite curb, 3 feet of grass tree belt, and a 4-foot sidewalk behind that. Let's go to the next picture, please. Here's our crosswalk, and you can see, if you're driving north on Hart Street, you've got good visibility of the crosswalk area here. It's approximately at 183 Hart Street. Here's the house, our Lot 3 essentially driveway comes out at a pretty close to this location as well. There's the house that gets torn down and replaced with the Lot 3 on the left side of that photograph. And then if you were at the crosswalk, looking in a northerly direction here, this is what you'd see, so the sidewalk would be behind the telephone pole there, there's a, I think, another cone, another cone here, and so this is the area where we'll, where we'll have the 3 feet of grass tree belt and the 4-foot sidewalk behind it. Let's go to the next one. This is just to refresh my memory about Dyer Road, here's the crosswalks at Dyer Road getting people onto the east side of the street, and you can see there's no sidewalk down here in the vicinity of, on the west side of Dyer and Adeline. And here's, in the opposite direction, heading up towards our project, there's that crosswalk at Dyer Road. This is the area that will not get built out, no connection on this left side, but the connection on the east side, the right side, is very good. And I think that summarizes the, the presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you very much, Jim. Yes.
While you're on the crosswalks there, there's a note that the pedestrian crossing sign, an advanced pedestrian crossing sign, proposed to be fluorescent yellow-green and designed to current retro-reflective standard. Where would those signs be, and what is an advanced pedestrian crossing?
So, yeah, so we put a sign at the crosswalk, and there's a couple, there's a picture of a person crossing, and then there's an arrow that points down at the ground, that points you down at the crosswalk. Yeah? Oh, there you go, thank you. Yeah? That, that sign is right at the crosswalk, and then for a 30-mile-an-hour road, it's going to end up being about 200 feet ahead, there'll be a sign that says "Crosswalk Ahead." And so if, you know, if it was a faster road, it would be further in advance, but for a 30-mile-an-hour kind of road like we have here, 200 feet before the crosswalk, there'd be a warning sign, and same thing on the opposite, in the opposite direction.
Did that, was that condition talking about replacing those two signs to the retro, the yellow-green retro-reflective, or just removals?
There was a little discussion in the Parking and Traffic Commission about different types of yellow signs. There's yellow fluorescent sign, and then there's yellow-green fluorescent signs, and I think it was the opinion of the Parking and Traffic Commission that they prefer yellow-green. I don't know that this is a really big deal, but apparently our Public Works Director prefers the yellow signs, so there's a difference of opinion there, but in any event, there, you know, there'll be reflective signs, there'll be yellow-green in the ones that we install, and, and they'll work fine. That does remind me that there was a condition of the Parking and Traffic Commission that basically said the final location of the crosswalk is subject to approval of the Engineering Department. You know, we think we've got it in a pretty good location, but if the Engineering Department came out and said, hey, we want to move it a few feet, then that's fine, whatever, whatever the Engineering Department prefers is okay with us.
And the other condition is that the pedestrian crossing shall be ladder-style, as in, it's just a normal, average-looking crosswalk?
Yeah, and in my photograph, I drew it with lines going across the entire picture, just because I think everyone knows that's the crosswalk, but actually, the crosswalk paint scheme these days is bars, you know, going across the road, and so you'd probably have 10 bars going across the road from left to right, not continuous.
Can we make a condition that people actually get fined for not stopping for people who are standing on a crosswalk, Matt? Can we make that?
I would second that if I could.
No, I guess not.
At this point, anyone else have any other questions? Questions at this point? What, what boards, I mean, what departments have we heard from and have not heard from?
We've heard from, the Parking and Traffic Commission wrapped their stuff up. I believe the Fire Department has mostly wrapped it up, however, I did have to send per statute plans and a memo asking for reports from every city department that's in the statute. That includes the Engineering Department, the Board of Health, Design Review Board, Police, Fire Chief, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Engineering Department. So there's quite a few, and they have 45 days from the date the application was complete, which was June 24th, so I think they have until August 8th to get me their information. I've asked them to get it to me more timely than that, so we can, because this isn't held up.
Yeah.
But they have 45 days per statute.
In particular, I'm, particular, I'm looking forward to seeing the Engineering Departments.
I believe they're going to have, theirs done by July 9th, so they should be having it for the next meeting.
Okay, and the DRB, when's the next?
It's on our agenda for the 10th.
For the 10th, okay, so both before our next meeting? And, but then we have a number of others, too, so, okay. I mean, just one everyone's expectations to be in the same place, so probably hold the questions I have for Engineering in particular, and Fire Department as well.
As you wish.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you very much, Mr. Griffin, but I'm about to see if there's anyone from the public who'd like to make comment, and if that's the case, then, you know, perhaps you could be on hand. So anyone here in the council chambers seeing no one, anyone on Google Meet here to discuss? Okay, that being said, or not being said, would be the case, then I think at this point it, we should make a decision as to whether we want to have our next discussion on this, a continuation until either the 15th of July, or the, what is it, of August?
16th.
August 19th.
19th. 19th. Yeah, Mr. Gomes.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I don't know why we wouldn't put it on the 15th, and then if we need to kick it, because we still haven't, you know, received all that feedback, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if I get most of the department's stuff back next week, I can try to push the other ones along to say, hey, I've got everybody's, we can wrap this up.
That would be appreciated.
I can try to do something like that.
Okay, good. The 15th work for the applicant, Mr. Griffin? Okay, I'd welcome a motion. Yes, Ms. Linner?
Is that what, we continue, I move to continue the public hearing?
Microphone, please.
Sorry, Jim. I move to continue the public hearing for OSRD Site Plan Number 12-24 located at 184 and 186 Hart Street to our next meeting of July 15th.
Second by Mr. Gomes, all those in favor, opposed, it's unanimous, eight to nothing. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, moving to our, next. And so our, our next public hearing for this evening is the definitive plan of subdivision for 14 Greenwood Ave, 14 Greenwood Beverly LLC. The applicant is being represented by Thomas J. Alexander, Alexander &amp; Feminow, One School Street in Beverly, Mass. Do you want to read the notice?
Notice is hereby given under the provisions of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81-T, and provisions of the City of Beverly Code, Chapter 375, Article 3, Section 375-13G, that the Beverly Planning Board will hold a public hearing during a public meeting that begins at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025, at Beverly City Hall, 3rd Floor Council Chambers, 191 Cabbage Street, Beverly, Massachusetts, for the review of a definitive subdivision plan showing one new single-family building lot and improvements to a right-of-way that connects to Greenwood Avenue. The applicant is 14 Greenwood Beverly LLC. The property is located at 14 Greenwood Avenue in an R90 zoning district and is shown on Assessors Map 35, Lot 3. The application and plans are on file in the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review.
Mr. Alexander, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Acting Chairman. Nice to be here before you, and thank you for the opportunity to represent the owners of the 14 Greenwood Ave property. Just by, just a quick refresher, this was originally approved by this board on October 29th as a, for three lots, two pork chop lots in the existing lot that has the house on it, very interesting house designed by H.H. Richardson. The neighbors appealed that, and we met with them, and were able to, we got, work out a compromise whereby we reduced it to one extra lot, so it's a total of two lots, and we're here before you to have the, as you're probably aware, in order for property to be divided, you have to present a plan to the Registry of Deeds, and so this process is the process of subdivision. This isn't your usual subdivision. We're building a new road and all that, we're using existing roads for it, and we have incorporated all of that which the board had as its conditions of the approval of this special permit, as well as that which we had negotiated with the neighbors in the settlement agreement. So having said all that, I'm going to ask Bob Griffin to present the plans as the, the final plans that flesh out all of that.
Thank you, Tom.
Welcome back, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you. It's been a while. Let's, go to the next slide, please. Okay. Okay, so when we were last here, that was actually, I think, in March, but we had submitted the plan here in February. We showed the division of these, the parcel into two lots, the one on the left is 12, becomes 12 Greenwood Avenue, and that shows a concept building sort of layout in a driveway. That's 3.9 acres, the one on the right is about 2.8 acres, and this was the, this is the historic structure that Tom mentioned with the sort of weird remnant pool in the backyard and these gravel driveways that come up. And so, again, just to sort of create the paperwork necessary for the Registry of Deeds, we prepared the subdivision plan. We'll move to the next slide, okay, so. And I hope you noticed the similarity between the plan we just showed you and this particular plan, it's the same layout. We have had a little bit of work since March with the Conservation Commission, so you'll see as we go along a couple things that derive from the Conservation Commission permitting process. These ditches that sort of run along the gravel driveway here and here are all under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and so we have, you know, we had to go through the notice of intent process. And last night, the Commission issued an order of conditions for the proposed work. So I don't think we have any, you know, substantial changes, but we did do a little, some tweaks to the plan as we went along. We also added a couple things that was required by the subdivision requirements. We added in some driveways on the, on the south side of the project, and we did, in the process of the conservation permitting, move this driveway about five feet further from an existing wetland here than was shown previously, but again, pretty, pretty minor changes. We also added a note at the top right corner here regarding the planning decision from March, which says that there shall be no further subdivision of the, of the land.
Excuse me, Bob, what was the change on Greenwood Ave?
What was the change on what?
You said there was a change on Greenwood Ave with driveways?
Oh, we, we showed these existing driveways, right. They weren't shown on the plan previously, so those two was just a minor plan amendment, and I think on one of our other plans, the addition of these names of the property owners was an amendment as well. So let's go to the next page. Again, back to March, April, this was the plan that we showed you as the road improvement plan, in these gray areas along the side of the road where the areas where the driveway gets widened so that it can adequately allow for Fire Department's apparatus to travel to all the homes. Right now, they, the Fire Department says they can't get up to several of these homes in the wintertime because of the narrowness of the roadway, the tortuous turns, and the condition of the roadway. So all of that gets improved as part of this project. We also are adding a pullout here on the straightaway here, so that somebody can pull aside, and if we had, you know, oncoming traffic, for example. Let's go to the next one.
I'm going to interrupt you once again, if I can. You're saying, I think, that the existing conditions do not allow, in Captain Crayling's opinion, for access currently?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would just clarify that, that it's not that it doesn't allow access to our property, it's not safe access for all of the properties that services. So the current status of the road is not, in his opinion, safe, right? And by doing this, part of what we're doing is making, incorporating all of the changes that he's looking at for, to make it safer for everybody up there.
Yeah, that's, was the intent of what I was asking. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we had shown some fire truck turning sort of diagrams as part of this process to, to show that we'd be able to get the apparatus up and back. And then the next slide shows a conceptual utility layout with some, you know, electric telephone cables, some water lines coming in through here to serve number 12, and then we're going to pick up number 14 and number 12 with a common sewer line going up and attaching another private, connecting into a private sewer up just off the page there. So that, and that all, again, work was permitted through the Conservation Commission. If we go to our next slide, we see the current site plan, so it's gotten a little busier as things have gone on. We've added in some trees here for screening so that there's no chance of lights sort of shining into the neighbors across the ways' property. We've added some trees along this wetland replication area to provide shading so that the wetland plants can grow and thrive. We've got a couple of trees being added in around the pullout here as mitigation for some trees that will be removed to construct the pullout. And we've added in a couple of other little odd things, like there's a, there's a rock in this swale that we get, that we remove, and there's three dead trees that are pretty close to this pullout that one of the neighbors wanted us to include in the project, and so we've done that. But just the same plan as you saw before, just a little bit more detail, a little bit more information about erosion controls and restoration and wetlands planting to, to make sure that everything works. Let's go to the next slide, please. This, this sheet was really just intended to include our list of subdivision waivers, so if you were looking at the Beverly rules and regulations for subdivisions, you know, there's all sorts of requirements associated with designing roads and building out roads, and because we're really not in, you know, we're not building out a traditional subdivision road, as Tom pointed out, we have a number of waivers on the plan. I actually zoomed in on those in the next two pages if you wanted to discuss any of those in particular, but that's, that's really the purpose of that particular sheet. Let's go to the next slide, please. That's just one of the blowups in case we wanted to chat, let's go to the next one. That's the rest of the blowup, let's go to the next one. And this is our, our last plan is just some details associated with the, the build-out of, or the improvements to the gravel driveway to provide the Fire Department access. I'll go, I'll zoom into the next, the next slide zooms in on one of those a little bit. If we go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so here, here's our existing driveway, let's say it's approximately 12 feet wide now, it gets widened out to 14 feet, which is what the Fire Department requested, and here's an existing ditch, so the ditch gets filled in, and then we build a new ditch a little further away. And again, all this ditch work is within the Conservation Commission jurisdiction and is now approved. We have one particular spot up near the mansion of number 14 where we're, have to fill in a wetland in order to provide the 14 feet of common driveway, and this cross-section shows how that wetland area gets filled and the road gets built. And that's the extent of my presentation, I'd be happy to address any questions.
I think, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think that, as tedious as it sounds, that we'll want to go through step by step all of the waivers, just some of them obviously are pretty self-explanatory, they don't need to take a lot. Before we do that, I'd like to ask, let's see if any members of the board have any questions to the applicant right now? Yes, Mr. Miller?
The neighbors, I assume, have been apprised of the changes, and have there been any comments from, about us?
No, in fact, they had the opportunity to comment as well during the Conservation Commission permitting process, and I don't think they made any comments.
Thank you.
I had made a comment about slow easements because I noticed some, a lot of road grading going off of site, and you had mentioned that in your response, that the neighbors are entering into a road maintenance agreement, and everyone's on all the, is that correct?
Yes, and that's part of the settlement agreement with the neighbors, that we actually, we haven't finalized it, but we have a draft road maintenance agreement that all the neighbors will be involved with, so that they, to address any issues of maintenance of that, that driveway.
Mr. Alexander, are we talking about maintenance moving forward after the, the improvements are done?
Yes, after, and we're also part of, we're, our client is putting in an additional sum as part of the, the settlement agreement of, I believe, $10,000 into that fund to kind of get it started.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
By the way, just in terms of the comments from the neighbors, the neighbors have been very involved in this process in terms of, we've worked closely with them, incorporating their requests and suggestions, so it's, it's been a pretty collaborative process.
Thank you. Before we get to talking about each of the individual waivers, we can ask for public comment, which I'd like to do, which would mean switching to Google Meet if you could, Mr. Clausen. Is there anyone here in the room that would like to discuss, ask questions, et cetera? Okay, how about on Google Meet? It is a quiet evening, quiet evening, except here in this room. So, so at this point then, I'd, I'd welcome you back, Mr. Griffin, and if you could bring us through, I think one of the things I'm interested in is to identify the waivers that might need a little bit of discussion, and those that if we, that don't necessarily, and then we can, you know, that can perhaps inform different questions from the board.
I don't think any of them are especially significant, but I'll just sort of try to run through them reasonably quickly. The first one says, you know, that we're required to draw the plan at 1 inch equals 40, we drew it at 1 inch equals 30, that's a larger scale, so it shows details better. Trees greater than six-inch diameter at breast height were not mapped, we didn't map all the trees, we're really not taking down that many, we're really sort of working within the constraints of our gravel driveway, and we are taking down a few trees, but I, I think it would be just a ton of work with no real value to map every tree on the property. Profiles, a profile was not drawn because we don't, we're not really altering the grade of the gravel driveway, whatever slope it's at is what it's going to remain, and we don't really have the opportunity to, to change the slope of the roadway. Subsoil conditions were not ascertained, so we have, you know, we would normally dig test pits or soil borings as part of a road construction project, but here where the road already exists, there's no real need to go out and take those soil borings, we're going to, the road was probably built over 100 years ago, and we're going to, again, work with it the way it is.
I could just ask, is that's also under 375-13B-15? Are both of those, the profiles and subsoil?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure that I'm reading it right.
Okay. 16 is a high watermark, like with our previous project, we drew a line four feet above the pond elevation, there really is no pond here, and so there's no need for a high watermark here. Drainage calculations, we aren't really installing any new drain pipes, we're not replacing any drains, and so there's no real need for drainage calculations here, it's a private road. Trees to be saved, all trees within 10 feet of a right-of-way were not mapped as this subdivision regulation requires. Again, we didn't think there would be any value in doing all that. Cross-sections, if we were starting a new road construction, we would probably draw cross-sections every 50 feet or so. Again, we're, we're dealing with the road the way it is, and so there's no real need to draw those cross-sections. Streetlights, fire alarms, and sidewalks, again, we're not adding any streetlights here, we're not adding fire alarms, and we're certainly not adding sidewalks, so there's a waiver for those. An overall drainage plan, again, just like with our drainage calculations, we are not altering drainage very much, so we're not preparing a drainage, an overall drainage plan. The next item is inadequacy of weigh analysis, we've seen many of those over the years, and if we're, in a significant subdivision, they have some value, but here where we only have one lot and we have such large, open acreage, I don't think inadequacy of weigh analysis is necessary or worthwhile.
I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, so when we're doing this, this is, we're doing an analysis of the, the street that provides frontage, we're not doing an analysis of the driveway. So there's an existing way here, it's a public way, it's got, you know, adequate drainage, everything is already, it's, it's very, it's really, actually, to tell you the truth, until about, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, this would have been an A and R, but a case came down that said, we have to come in with, even though it's on an existing way, a public way and all that, we have to provide, we have to go through the regular subdivision process and just waiver the heck out of it, so that's, that's what this is. So when we're talking about all this stuff, we're not talking about the driveway, we're talking about Greenwood.
Greenwood, yep. Thank you, Tom. The next item is the alignment, so Beverly has some rules about how tight a turn can be in a roadway, and I think it's like a 300-foot radius, and our turns on the existing roadway are much tighter than that, so we're not meeting those alignment requirements of the Beverly subdivision regulations with our those alignment requirements of the Beverly subdivision regulations with our existing layout. The width, certainly, you know, a subdivision road would be forty feet wide and we, we're not anywhere near that, so we're asking for a waiver there. Grade, six percent maximum grade for a road in Beverly. We're at about twelve percent maximum, so we're significantly steeper than the rules and regulations allow. Vertical curves, this deals with how quickly you can transition the grade of the road as you're going along its length. And here again, we're, we're dealing with the existing gravel road the way it exists. We're not changing the slope or the grades of the roadway. A leveling area at the end, there is a small leveling area, but it's not as large as would be required with a new road and so we're not providing a leveling area that meets the rules and regulations. Dead-end road length, we have a five hundred foot maximum length in Beverly and our, we're at around thirteen hundred feet long right now, so we're well in excess of that minimum or that maximum road length requirement. Cul-de-sac at the end is required for a new subdivision roadway. Here we have created a turning easement at the end for fire trucks to turn around instead of a cul-de-sac. Curb cuts, we have fifty-seven feet of curb cut at the new driveway and at the mansion, which is necessary for the fire trucks to turn around in the absence of the cul-de-sac. And so we're, we're exceeding the curb cut requirement that's in the Beverly rules and regulations. Okay, we're going to go to the next one. Next one refers to an easement, says an easement is not provided for the existing water course across twelve Greenwood Avenue. So we would normally put in, well, anyways, we would normally put a drainage easement or some sort of easement for that water course, but in this particular case, it's, it's not necessary because it's on private property and we're not altering any water course flows here. Lot drainage, we didn't undertake test pits on the new lot to characterize drainage conditions or soil and groundwater conditions in that area. It's a large lot and we can tell by looking at it where a reasonable place to put the house is. The house is going to have to deal with ledge because there was ledge outcrops everywhere out there. And so that study of lot drainage was not necessary for this project. Fire hydrants, we're not adding any hydrants. We, the new house will be protected by a residential fire suppression sprinkler system. Sidewalks, grass plots and trees, none of those are proposed, but that would, they would be required in a new subdivision roadway. Underground utilities are typically required in a subdivision roadway, but here we're going to use overhead utilities, which is what's out there and serving all of the other houses. Roadway construction, these portions of the subdivision regulations refer to the thickness of asphalt and types of materials and gravels to be used. And here again, we're not constructing a subdivision road, we're just really repairing the existing gravel driveway and so we're not necessarily meeting all of those requirements that are specified in the rules and regulations. Utilities, no water, sewer, gas, electric communications, fire alarm or drain mains to be installed. So we're not putting any new mains in. We are providing some services, water and sewer, extending those to the lots, as I indicated in an, an earlier graphic. And some of these issues we've talked about a couple of times, but they show up several times in the regulations. So sidewalks, for example, show up again. No curbs in berms or no curbs along the side of the roadway are proposed. No grass plots between the road and the sidewalk. No street trees, there's, this is a very dense wooded area, so there's no need for any street trees. No new survey monuments are proposed and they're not really necessary in this instance. And no new street lights are proposed and no fire alarm pullbox is proposed. And that sort of summarizes the waivers from the rules and regulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you going through and realize that it's a little longer than usual, so.
Okay.
Are there any questions now that that's happened? What, what departments are we waiting for?
Engineering and Health.
Engineering and Health.
Engineering, again, also, I think they said July ninth, if they have comments.
July ninth, so before the fifteenth.
Yeah, I think that's what they told me.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know what their comments could be, but they could, they may or may not directly reflect some of those waivers. I'm not sure.
And they did comment on the, on the, the special permit, so that they, they reviewed these, these plans a couple of times before.
But for this to, whether it's saying just exactly that to us or whatever is important, I think, for us.
For the record.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the, just asking, does the fifteenth work for you, July fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'd welcome a motion to continue. Oh, do we? Oh, that's right, we asked before if there were any questions and no one said. Has anyone arrived on Google Meet or swarmed into the room who would like to discuss? Okay, so I'd welcome a motion to close public hearing at this time, or we can continue. We should continue this.
We don't want a closing.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't want a closing.
Yeah. So my, my, my opinion is that we should continue until the fifteenth, our next meeting, if anyone wants to discuss.
So move.
Oh, so move. We have a motion, seconded by Mr. Gomes. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, eight to nothing. Okay, so we.
Very much.
Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. That's the final public hearing of tonight, so I'd welcome a motion to reconvene our meeting.
Someone?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so we are back in our regular meeting. We have one, we have one additional item and that's the approval of minutes. And, hold on a second while I find my minutes. Actually, they're not mine, they're the ones that Ms. Flannery was so good to hand some of her, her edits. Ms. Flannery, would you like to bring us through?
Mr. Clausen.
April thirtieth, I, if you recall, last week, there was a few, or last week, I guess it was like a month, over a month ago, last meeting, there were some questions on some of the content of these minutes and I went back and listened to the recording and made the corrections as needed. The only thing that's left over that Ms. Flannery found was this, goes a clarification of page three, lines one fourteen and fifteen, which, that's the part that I listened to and that is correct in, in, in the recording. And there's a Scrivener's error on page six, line two sixty-nine. So that's really the only thing that needs to be changed from April thirtieth now.
Does anyone else have any other changes, edits? I'd welcome a motion. Yes, Ms. Flannery?
Move to accept the minutes of the April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five public meeting as amended?
Second by Mr. Gomes. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, eight to nothing. That's approved.
And May twenty-seventh, looks all Scriveners or just minor corrections, changing my title and deleting the word, changing the word passage to accept, instead of to recommend passage of the site plan review, we accept, recommend, recommend approval of the site plan review to the planning board. And, and a Scrivener's on page four to make it consistent with capitalizing some letters and that's it.
Do, yes, Ms. Flannery? Any other edits or changes? Ms. Flannery?
Move to accept the planning board minutes from May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five being amended?
Second by Mr. Gomes. All those in favor? Opposed, it passes, eight to nothing. Is there any additional new business, Mr. Clausen?
Nope.
Okay. So that being said, I would welcome, yes?
How was our agenda look for our two fifteen?
Well, we have no public hearing, we have no public hearings to set tonight, so we have trask, the continuation of these two things. I know of some other things that are coming. There's a modification to fifty Volch and setting some other public hearings. Mr. Hanley, with Mr. Marks indicated they're doing a modific, modifications though to a subdivision. We'll have to, we'll have determination to see if that's major, minor, same, all that and same thing with, yeah, those are the things I know about.
Thank you.
Should keep our July interesting. If there's nothing else, I'd welcome a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Ah, thank you, Judy. Is there a second? Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marcus. All those in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.